Alright you guys, it's the Donovan Sadek Show. We are back. That's the 808 remix by the group Black. And they used to be managed by Lisa Left Eye Lopez of TLC. And 808, boom, she ain't got that boom. And let me tell you something, um, this is Donovan Sadek Show, I'm Donovan Sadek, and I am joined by our longtime correspondent and, uh, on the ground, roving, knowledge expert, Ms. Tay. Ms. Tay, how you been?
I'm good. I am still a little miffed from last night.
You're still a little miffed from last night?
Yeah.
Um, you know, I know you sit and you observe from your perch and stuff, and we're gonna be getting a lot of your insight from what you saw because you invited me because I didn't want to go.
I know, I only wanted to go because of the whole amphitheater situation.
Okay, right.
And then once we actually looked at the agenda, I was like, oh my god, what's really going on?
Right, and of course, you're looking at the agenda, the public comments are usually supposed to come first because people have work to do and stuff.
Right, and it was the reverse.
They reversed it around, and we had to wait, 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 wait. So we're gonna get into that, uh, this, uh, evening, and we're gonna talk about some, a few other things that have happened, but, um...
Oh, but wait, the commish?
Yes.
And Lindsay?
Yes.
Got trophies for the, uh, the 4th of July float, so kudos to them.
Yeah, right, they got kudos to them, yeah.
That's a lot of work that they did.
Lot of work, um, you know, you've got some really, really good people that have lived out here for a lot of years that want what's best for the city, and a lot of us do want what's best for the city.
Right.
But just because you keep saying kids and jobs, you gotta tell you, what kind of kids? What if these kids are, are, are gangsters? What if, uh, what kind of jobs? If they're low-income jobs, that isn't solving the problem either, you know?
No, it's not.
So, so, so everybody, you know, wants the same things, it's how you go about doing it, and it isn't in, in our best interest. So, uh, real quick, let's get into, you guys wake up and get ready because school is about to start. Do you hear that bell? There it is, time to, time to get in. Um, could you, Tay, could you please give us a recap on what you saw last night in regards to the meeting?
That was the most disrespectful shit show I have ever been a part of. I've never been more embarrassed for the city as a whole.
Okay.
I, I mean, the lack of decorum, no, the juvenile antics that took place last night were, there were some highlights, but then there was some stuff that I was like, are you freaking kidding me? Are you freakin', I just don't get it. I don't get it.
Okay, uh, well, what were some of like, I mean, okay, let me ask you this, what was some of the positive about last night?
Um, the amphitheater and the skate park, um, that to me was the best part, I mean...
Okay, so, so you're not against the skate park?
No.
You're not against the amphitheater?
And I, I know that we've talked about, because I know we've talked offline about the amphitheater, and I think it's a great idea, and I've said this on Facebook, it is a good idea, however, comma, we have other, we have bigger things to work on for the city than an amphitheater right now. Four million dollars can be invested towards the city as far as our infrastructure goes. I live across from the library, we had a huge water main break, and now what they did was they, just that patch where they dug up, now it's all, it's adding to the, how terrible our roads are. Our roads are terrible.
Okay, um...
And I understand that they did the one point, and, uh, Jerry Mercado did a wonderful post to break down...
How that works out.
How that was supposed to work out, and apparently what was originally, um, drafted and what actually happened are, is two totally different things. So, the dollar amounts were different, and, well, now it's more, because it's 1.1 million dollars, and where they were going to redo the roads has changed. So, you know, I, I, I'm a little pissed off at our city. I'm disappointed in our city because we're putting the cutesy stuff ahead of the important stuff. You know, it's, we have some serious issues within our city that need to be addressed. You know, yeah, a skate park, great, but again, I agree with Gaiba, it's great to have a skate park, but you're putting two skate parks close together.
Within, close together.
That makes no sense. So now you have kids gravitating to one center part of town versus putting one over here for the kids that live over here, and leave the one existing at March. Yes, I understand that it's at five, it opens at 5:00 PM or whatever, whatever, have another skate park on the other side of town. We have RTA, these students have a very cheap fare on the RTA. It, it's, it's not that big of a deal, in my opinion.
So, so you don't agree with Rafael Rodriguez?
That is the most, I...
You don't, you don't agree? I go to the meeting, you should have been at the meeting!
I don't, I, 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 I don't like the people that think that they can...
Bully.
I'm the loudest person in the room, so I can talk over everybody, and this is someone on the planning commission.
Yeah, he's a planning commissioner.
So, one, he needs to act like an adult and stop name-calling, yelling, ridic, him and Luis Palomares honestly need to be banned from the city council meetings.
But that's not gonna happen.
They are literally the most disrespectful individual, and how this man is on the planning commission is beyond me.
Well, because he was appointed by his people, yeah.
He's in the Highland Fairview clique, but still...
Yeah, because secondly, he's not qualified to be on there, but that's the kind of people we need to get.
He literally cannot form a coherent sentence to save his life.
Right, and of course, he's getting paid from Highland Fairview, so, because, you know, when you ask him what the...
I'm embarrassed for him, that he goes up there, him and Luis Palomares, and they embarrass themselves every single time.
Um, I was kinda, uh, miffed at the fact that Luis Palomares, "You're against the kids, you're against the kids!"
Where, she kept accusing, uh...
Gaiba.
Mr. Gaiba about going against the kids. First of all, that's not what he said, and two, how dare she sit up here and say that he's going against the kids when she used her own damn grandkids to commit a crime?
To commit crimes, right, right.
Who...
Well, are you aware that the Palomaristas is, uh, very well-known?
Apparently they're notorious.
In San Bernardino County?
They're very notorious.
With the Sheriff's Department, right?
You know, if your legacy, when your family is actual crime, that's not a good thing.
Luis Palomares, city activist, what does that mean?
She's not a city activist, she's a city criminal.
There you go.
She's a city criminal.
And if people would do their background...
And she tries to intimidate people sitting in the back of the room, mumble, mumble, mumble.
Mumble, mumble.
Just shut up.
Right, right.
Shut up.
Like I said, but if you, but if you see her away from her, her goons...
Oh, she wouldn't bust a grape in a fruit fight.
She wouldn't bust a grape, and she's, and she's like, to herself, she's...
But that's the kind of element that needs to be eliminated and removed from the city council meetings. In Corona, when I lived in Corona, you could not act like that in a city council meeting. They will escort you out with a quickness, so for this to actually be, but, to act, because it's the Highland Fairview clique, they're allowed to be disrespectful to Gaiba.
They have the majority.
And to allow that dis, that level of disrespect, and it's on video, everyone can roll the Beautiful Bean footage and see what it is.
Right, and then for those, and requirement, I'm gonna cut you off, and for those that will be interested, I will be posting that video of the city activist, Luis Palomares, in the act, using her grandchildren to create crimes and do crimes. So, it's undisputable, people say, "Oh, you're slandering her!"
No, I've got the video.
No, we've got the video, and we're gonna put that video up to remind you guys, this is what this person does, and she has the nerve to talk about, uh, she's a champion for children.
But that's the community activist.
Right, the community activist.
Using your kids to, in the commission of a crime.
And, you know, and, and so sad because she has no shame in that she will still show her face in public at a city council meeting.
That means, and that's why we were at the city council, and I know I made just a random joke about how, what it feels like to sell your soul.
Be soulless.
You know, I just wonder, you know, is it like that missing keys feeling? What is, what does that feel like, you know?
You wouldn't know. But, uh, for those that, uh, that did watch, uh, the, the, uh, city council will be rebroadcasted on the web. Go to the city website, you can see it over there, I will be putting up, uh, important parts of it.
And you don't even have to go that far into the video until the fir, okay, so here, so, there is a couple of things that really happened, and the first thing that happened was, there is a lawyer, well, everyone knows about DeSantis. DeSantis came from Rivertucky, I am, you know, I was raised in Riverside, so, um, DeSantis came from Riverside, and you know, if you're familiar with who DeSantis is, you know, he's absolute trash.
Tom DeSantis.
Um, that's why he is no longer associated with the city of Riverside.
Riverside, yeah, they ran him out of Riverside.
And of course, Moreno Valley, we have this magnet...
We picked him up, yeah!
We have this magnet for garbage, so this is what we do. Um, so, the, Ms. Sterling got up there and she started reading people for filth and, you know, uh...
I love the, I love the fact that, that, that she read the city attorney riot act, because he does, that guy is corrupted and doesn't know what the hell he's doing.
The city attorney will just bend over and take it because he's getting a check. And that's why I posted on Facebook, the whole city staff needs to, the city clerk...
Yeah, they need to be fired.
Everybody needs to go.
Everybody, everybody, everybody needs to be fired. The city clerk didn't even know what she was doing!
Was this her first city council meeting?
No!
Oh.
And they just hired, remember they, they told us they, uh...
They're hiring an assistant city clerk to help her, because she can't figure it out.
She can't figure it out. This lady's making no college education, she's making a...
Well, you know what, college education doesn't make the person.
No, it doesn't make the person.
You can tell that she is not qualified for that job.
To be in that position, right.
She needs to either, you know, be a sec, as admin, or, you know, a parking attendant...
But, but a lot of city clerks to make a six-figure salary...
You're required.
You are required to have some kind of educational degree, so...
I was kind of, I, I kinda felt bad for her because when the camera would go to her, you could see that she's flustered.
Yeah, she's flustered.
So that's why I thought that this was her first...
No, this is not her first.
I was like, oh, okay, well, never mind, girl, you still haven't, you know, like a, you know, because you know, military, we have a continuity book, you know?
Yeah, yeah, but, but even if it was her first one, she should be competent enough to go through the procedure, it's a simple vote.
It is a simple vote, but she was like, ah, well, you know, I was like, okay, well, girl, alright.
And, and then what are you doing during the week? Maybe you should practice that before you go to the council meeting to do that, you know, give her some time, training.
So, Ms. Sterling got up, she started reading people for filth, and of course, the mayor got his panties in a wad, and so he shut it down. So then that's when everyone in the peanut gallery was, like, you know, let her speak, which I agree, just because you don't like what she's saying because it's directed towards you this time, you can't shut that off.
And, uh, Victoria Baca, who championed, Victoria Baca versus the school board in Moreno Valley, whatever that thing was...
Okay, so, I did not know the, what really hap, I had heard about it, but I never, so once I heard about it, I was like, oh, hell no.
Right, right.
She is literally a racist piece of trash.
What, have you been reading my votes?
You know, you know, we're in a very tense climate right now politically, so, you know, everyone's screaming somebody's racist, so, yes, to actually see it in black and white, that's where I, I need to see the receipts.
Yeah.
So as soon as I saw the receipts, and it, when I tell you it came so quick to my inbox, I'm like, wait a minute, my phone just went off, and it was, it was literally ju, that.
Right.
And I was like, wow, so, I mean, I got the whole Cliff Notes breakdown plus the receipt, so I was like, wow, so y'all are really on it in the city, you know? So, I was reading through that, and I was like, wow, so this is the kind of people that we have in Moreno Valley?
Yes.
Okay, great, so she's not working in my interest, is...
No, absolutely not, no, and, and, uh, Victoria Baca has been on record to have said she doesn't represent everybody that's in her district or in, and you notice that, she's a District One Councilmember, mayor pro temp, big deal. Um, you're supposed to represent your district first.
Right.
The city is second.
Right.
But in her mind, "I'm here to make decisions for the city!"
So, you know, Gutierrez got his little panties in a wad, he shut it down for 15 minutes.
Yeah, because he didn't know what to do, he was, ooh, ooh.
He was so...
He's an idiot.
...discombobulated, he didn't, and then Baca's face was cla, I swear, I wish I would've videotaped that part. If you see the video, and I, I pray they don't edit it out, look at Baca and Gutierrez's face, and then Cabrera's looking around like, what in the world is going on? So I was like, oh, okay, so she's out here, you know, saying, you know, and she speaks legalese. I don't speak legalese. When someone speaks legalese, I trust and believe what you say. You know, it's, again, trust but verify. But because she's had prior history with DeSantis, I enjoy the fact that she's there. So, they shut it down for 15 minutes, we reconvene, and guess what, she picks up on her minute and two seconds that she had left, still continues to drag the entire city staff...
Which is her right to do.
Which is her absolute right to do so. If they are not working in the, in our best interest...
Interests.
The city council meeting is our forum to make it known, and if they don't like it when people make it plain, why are you, why are you in politics?
Right.
So, then, my hero...
You found a new hero, huh?
Um, Jason Hunter.
Hunter.
My god.
And he broke it down so simple, so simple.
Sir, if I find you, I want to take you to lunch.
Yes, so he was so simple about it.
But no, he made a very valid point, which he beat me to it, um, because they are, they did advertise the skate park, but why are we sitting here trying to vote on something you, you've already allocated money to?
Right.
And for Gaiba to...
The emails were already out, all of that stuff.
Yeah, and for Gaiba to say, why aren't we going through the natural, normal steps? And that becomes twisted, "You don't like the kids, you don't like the kids." No, what he's saying is logical.
There's a procedure.
Why is it so close to the existing skate park? Or, why didn't we just fix the current skate park to make it better?
Right, which would be cheaper.
Which would be cheaper, and he pointed it out, that it would be cheaper. Why are we doing this? Why were, why weren't other council members brought into the fold on this? Why weren't we talked about this?
Now, um, as we talk about the skate park, I'm actually on the website, and I'm gonna be, uh, putting up a video, so if you're listening, you guys can go to the video on the Inland Empire Informer, it's, uh, the video is gonna show the, the picture of the, uh, board, and that was up there, it's been up there for a couple of weeks, and I kinda wondered that, over a month, it's been up there over a month, and it says...
I know someone said that they saw it a few weeks ago, so, yeah.
Yeah, almost a month. And it, and it says, coming mid-2019. For them, for them to put that up there, that says...
And that's where Rafael Bregeras was like, oh, well, you know, we put signs up, no, you put sign, that's like me just saying, you know, baby coming soon, but I'm not pregnant.
Right.
You can't forecast something that's not actually in existence.
In existence.
You can't say, oh, I'm getting married in 2019.
So, mid-2019 is eight months away.
They've already got drawings, which they will obviously have paid for.
Which is, which is our tax dollars.
They have signs, which they have obviously paid for. So they've already allocated funds to this.
And your, your new hero was pointing that out. How do you do that if there wasn't an open forum?
It was an open forum that didn't include Marquez and Gaiba, that's what it was, because...
But you, you would still have to include them.
Not in Moreno Valley.
Okay, okay.
Obviously not in Moreno Valley, because this isn't the, what, this, this isn't the first time that they've excluded...
Right.
Marquez and Gaiba from stuff.
But some of the laws in California, the open, uh, borders law, whatever, the, you know, the Open Act, whatever.
Act or whatever, yeah.
Um, I, as a taxpayer, should be allowed to sit in and, uh, put my two cents in on this.
The problem is this, we can sit here and keep calling this out, calling this out, that, you know, Brown Act violations, blah, 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 and then, you know, Baca, Gutierrez, and Cabrera are like, we don't get together afterwards, when there's literal photos of all of them together all over town.
Wait, wait, you don't, wait, you don't get together, you guys are, uh, doing a headquarters.
They all have a joint headquarters.
Joint headquarters, so what are they talking about?
And they're photographed within that joint headquarters in a meeting with people.
Right.
They had a party to celebrate...
Right.
Their, their joint headquarters.
Joint headquarters.
They went to Leroy, we saw them at Leroy Holt...
We saw, at the, uh, football thing.
Football thing, and they were all huddled together.
Together, um, and, uh, in regards to your amphitheater, uh, your new hero talked about that as well, how he was invited back in October.
But of course, oh, there's nothing, you guys are only calling this out for politics.
Wait, wait, but the email, specifically, I think I remember seeing the email, the email specifically said, this is a groundbreaking. So, how could you give a groundbreaking date?
If, if we're voting on this now, that means we're talking about it, we're still in the planning phase. They've already alloc, they already have dr, schematics.
Right.
Drawings, and yes, it may be from 1995 or whatever, which I don't agree with, because that area in Moreno Valley has changed. That's why I don't agree with where it's at.
Okay.
Because there's a school right there on the corner of Veterans and Alessandro. So you're telling me you're gonna have all this, the traffic, there's so many different variables, from 1995 to 2018, 2019, 2020, there's so many different variables. So I don't, the behind-the-back, sneaky, that kinda crap, I don't appreciate.
I actually believe there is some Brown Act violations, and, uh, uh, Ms. Sterling, who is the lawyer...
Right.
Uh, I believe she's gonna be, uh, taking this to the DA, and hopefully, if Ido didn't make a lot of contributions to the DA, um, they will take this up.
It just makes me wonder, why the amphitheater? Why are they so gassed up about the amphitheater?
Well, you know, there was a young candidate about six years ago that had said, being the second biggest city in Moreno Valley, why don't we have a civic center?
Nobody wants to come here!
Well, no, we understand that, but, uh, and, you know, and I wasn't the first, I think his name was Donovan Sadek, I wasn't the first to come up with the, that idea, but I was saying, there's so much more we can do with our money for the residents, and everyone thought that was a stupid idea, a stupid idea back then, but all of a sudden now it's coming into fruition. Now, my problem is this, it's like you, I don't have a problem with them having an amphitheater.
No.
It's how you're gonna do it and the procedures to do it.
Right, and I just don't think the location is stupid.
Yeah, the location makes no sense whatsoever.
Alessandro's already just bottlenecking with all...
Wait a minute, but we got the land out there, we own the land!
Rafael Bregeras, my god, you see me...
It's cheaper!
Did you see me have to put my hands up, my fingers up?
Yeah, I did.
It was, he's so loud.
I did, I did.
He's so loud.
And, um, it, it's just, you know, it, it's just a shame that, um, these things, you know, we know what's going on, and nobody seems to want to get involved to, those of us that have still stayed in the fight, and like you said, like, you, like yourself, who observe and kinda go and do things every now and then, um...
But that's...
I, I'm just gonna tell you this, and I, I kinda blame us as, and I know we're busy, but Highland Fairview, with their white envelopes, they show up, and they show up and give an impression of, these are the people that support their thing.
They're unified as a team.
As a team, right.
We are not, every, this, like I said on, like I said on Facebook, and I can't remember whose post I commented on, but I said, this is my problem with the mayor's race in District Two, because we have so many people splitting the vote, we should get behind one candidate and put all of our energy and effort behind that one strong candidate. That's why with District Four, Shalinda, not only is that woman incre, that woman is a beast, she is smart, she knows what she's talking about, she's engaged, she's, I mean, she's an incredible person.
Okay.
She's not here to blow smoke up your ass, she's not here to grab money from people, she's here because, for the love of her district and for the love of her city.
Absolutely, absolutely, um, and speaking of candidates, how many candidates actually, you know, at this point, if you're running for office, you should be at these city council meetings.
Because this is the time, where even last year, it was, everyone was coming out of the woodwork all of a sudden, and they were speaking at city council meetings and all this other fun stuff.
Right, uh, Carla Thornton.
Carla was there.
Carla Thornton was there, um, Leroy Al Bundy Holt was there, and, um, for those of you guys that have been following the blogs, uh, my good friend, uh...
Raul.
Raul was there, I mean, there was...
He was there.
There was no incident, and like that, like I said...
No, he just walked around, hey, hey, hey.
Yeah, hey, 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 and everybody, you gotta remember, we're adults here, everything's been squashed, I mean, he does what he does, and he supports who he supports, I support what, who I support.
Yeah.
So, for those of you guys that were worried about my safety, hey, uh, don't, you don't need to be doing that, there's nothing to worry about.
There's nothing to worry about.
Um, and who else was there that was a candidate?
Who's your favorite?
Um, uh, the cand, uh, the, oh, 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 you mean, yeah, that, that was my note thing, um, I think I threw that out.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, I was so disgusted after last night.
I was so fed up, that's why I just like, I walked out, I was just so fed up.
I mean, i, i, it was time-consuming, because we, we left there about nine o'clock.
Yeah, it was a little bit after nine.
Nine thirty, yeah, a little bit.
It was a little bit after nine.
And, um, but, you know, I...
It just felt unproductive, that whole meeting was completely unproductive. Yeah, Leroy Holt was in the building, um, Raul Sanchez, Carla, and that was very nice for me. Okay, I got to meet Carla Thornton for the first time.
Very nice lady.
Very nice, very nice, it's nice to meet another, you know, retiree, another veteran, you know, uh, Angel was there, very nice man, very smart, um...
Yeah, uh, you know, and, and since we're talking about Carla Thornton, uh, she sent me her platform, so why don't you, uh, go ahead and kinda just hash her platform for her, you know, since you're a female, I don't wanna be like a male voice.
I'm a female, um, so, per Carla Thornton, um, here are some of her priorities. Ms. Thornton, if I mutilate this, I owe you a cocktail. Um, safe and healthy communities, safe neighborhoods are essential to living in a vibrant, a vibrant and healthy life. Um, on the city council, I will support all initiatives that support this belief by lobbying for the addition of increased public safety. Amen. Uh, economic development, um, we need to ensure that Moreno Valley is a place where businesses are welcome. By attracting both small and large businesses, we can assure that our residents will be able to work within the city, cutting down on traffic and pollution, and providing a great quality of life for our community. Uh, strategies on traffic improvement, as the previous chairperson of the traffic commission... A lot of these issues, because, you know, she's right, when it comes to safety and healthy communities, we were just talking about on a Facebook, uh, on one of these Facebook, Facebook posts, that, you know, we're talking about the murders within the community, and how we don't have enough, you know, police in our streets, and a lot of people don't feel safe. And I said, well, if you rewind back a few years, who cut our public safety budget?
Victoria Baca and Gutierrez.
Are your District One Councilperson, and your mayor.
Right.
You know, so when it comes down to public safety, and you complain about these cops, remember who did it. You have to remember your history, so we're not doomed to repeat it.
No, see, you see, when you bring that up, that makes them nervous, because they don't want people to do the research on them.
Well, and, and, and you know, you're right, we do have some people that are uninformed when it comes to the local, you know, we vote for the big pretty signs, this, that, and the other, and I, I, I said on Nextdoor that I'm really excited to see so...
I got kicked off of Nextdoor, I don't know why!
You know why.
I know why.
And I'm excited to see that so many people are like, okay, enough is enough. You know, people are raising their children out here, you know, they wanna be able to, You know, people are raising their children out here, you know, they wanna be able to, you know, take walks. You know, you, there was a time where you can walk your neighborhood at night, you know, and not have to carry a stick or a taser or whatever, and not have to worry about being robbed or being hit by a car or any of these things. We have a crime problem in Moreno Valley. And no one, you know, in our city council.
They're not concerned.
They're not concerned, because they're built, we're focused on an amphitheater, we're focused on, you know, uh, uh, our joint headquarters, we're focusing on football at Tilted Hill, we're focused on.
Soccer fields.
You know, stupid so- I, I, and I'm not disrespecting football in any way, shape or form.
No, 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 we're not, we're not doing that, football and soccer, there's other things that we need to, not everybody plays soccer. I know, I know it's, uh, that Hispanics love soccer and it's an international sport, but what about the other?
And that's why I said, thank God for bridge, you know, because they're going to give us something.
Else.
Else, they're giving us a boys and girls, they're giving us a place for our children to go. I have a fourteen-year-old and I have a nineteen, almost twenty-year-old. My fourteen-year-old has nowhere to go.
Right.
You know, yeah, he can go to the library, but you can't really.
Yeah, but even that library, it isn't equivalent to our city population.
Our library is so dated.
It is.
Our library doesn't have adequate parking.
I remember when it was brand new, that was it!
I know, but our library needs so much, that's why I was excited for our new library commissioner. So it's, it's just one of these things that we're so focused on the wrong things that we're not focused on what needs to happen to make Moreno Valley grow.
Now, um, I noticed at the meeting, uh, Carla Thornton was prepared, she had her, uh, business cards and she was, uh, meeting and greeting other candidates, other city officials.
She was shaking hands, handing out cards, hey, how you doing?
How you doing? Right, right, and you know, and your first impression is always your best impression, and, um, um, Al Bundy Holt was there.
He didn't speak to nobody.
He didn't speak to anybody.
No, 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 he didn't speak to us.
Yeah, he didn't speak to us, and everybody.
Hopefully that will change, hopefully he'll come on the show.
Um, um, and, 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 and this is why I'm kinda getting on him, after what he saw, cause I kept glancing back at him as well as you, and he just kinda sat there and was seeing how everything was running. Now, uh, Ms. Sterling was talking about Brown Act violations and going to the DA. Now, Mr. Holt, if you're listening, which I know you are, but you say you don't, but I know you are.
Run Forrest, run!
Are you willing to tie your reputation and your future to a bunch of people who might be going to prison?
It's not even that, you know, my mom was, my mom always told me, birds of a feather flock together.
Exactly.
You know, so I have to look at the people I associate with and say, is this?
The type of crowd.
Is this who I wanna hang out with, is this who I want my name attached to?
Right.
You know, people say that about you. But you know, you're not out here doing criminal crap, I don't have to worry about you doing any, you know what I'm saying?
Right, I've never been arrested in the civilian aspect of anything.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't have to worry about, you, you know, doing any type of fraud or having multiple court cases where.
Leans.
You know, or, it, it's, you know, I don't have to worry about the FBI knocking on your door.
Right.
That's just not who I choose to associate with, so for Mr. Holt to be this reputable realtor, USC grad football player.
But how does it?
But he has a friend that is notorious for putting his hands on women. So that to me is questionable, because, one, I understand that if that's your best friend.
Yeah.
But why would you associate yourself with people?
While you're running an election.
Not even, just period.
Period.
If you choose to tie yourself to someone that has, has multiple occurrences of laying his hands on females, that's who you choose to hang out with?
Or hanging around a person who was under an FBI investigation.
Man, you lucky, I was in the same ring half those people.
But let me ask you this, I don't know much about real estate, but why would a real estate person rent a house in Moreno Valley and have properties in Carson and LA?
He got that lean, lean, lean.
So all these leans that this man has, and I haven't even gone into that, this is what other people have, have sent to me, cause I mean, I, you know, I'm not really into that stuff, cause I, I pay my bills. Um, how can he think he's gonna be fiscally responsible for the tax dollar?
People in Moreno Valley dragged the hell out of Dolores Jimson about her past.
Being a bank robber.
Oh, she's a bank robber, how can she be trusted with the city funds? And then you turn around and go, oh, Leroy Holt, why not? He has all sixty-nine thousand dollars at one point and it's another, oh, that's just one credit card.
Right, and, 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 and he claimed, um, bankruptcy to try to erase some of those debt.
Yeah, it's just, so this is, I just, I just hope that people in Moreno Valley aren't that hypocritical, you know.
Uh, do you mean hypocritical or aren't that dumb? I'm gonna say dumb, because, you know, let's say it for what it is, because, because the information is out there. Uh, uh, people put it out there, Gordon, all kinds of people put the information out there, and yet they still vote against their interest.
Gordon Tucker, another smart man full of information.
Yeah, I mean.
That man is a bloodhound.
Bloodhound, I mean, like a dark knight, I mean, he sits there and he says, hey, this is, this is it.
I just, that city council meeting was an embarrassment, and I just hope and pray that everyone looks at that, gets motivated, and that becomes a catalyst for change in this city. We do not need to sit up here and continually embarrass ourselves.
Three years ago, you went to a similar city council meeting, and here it is three years later.
And I'm still embarrassed. But you know what, here's the thing, cause I know someone asked me, how come I haven't bought a house in Moreno Valley? And I said, here's why. I don't have that type of membership level when it comes to Moreno Valley. I'm not all in when it comes to Moreno Valley, because Moreno Valley hasn't shown me that it's here for me in any way, shape or form. It's not invested in my children, it's not invested in, you know, me as far as shopping, food, restaurants, nightlife, good roads, I mean, I don't ask for much, good roads is one of them. I wanna roll down the street and not have to buy tires. I mean, I just got my new car and I've already had to replace the tires.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, it's, it's, Moreno Valley's not showing me it's invested in itself. So why would I invest in Moreno Valley? And that's what I said last night, why would I invest in Moreno Valley? There's nothing, Moreno Valley and its leadership is not showing me that it's actually, that it gives a shit about this city. So why would I?
It seems to me that the leadership here is, is giving away things to their people. And when I say their people, I mean the Hispanics in the city, and we all understand they're the majority. But a third, thirty percent of the, the, the city is white, thirty percent of the, the city is black, give or take a few, you think. What about the rest of us?
But the problem, my whole thing is this, I understand everyone wants to have amphitheater, but that four point whatever million dollars, there is parts in this town, you can go to Rancho Delagio and it's all pretty and it's landscaped and has trees and all this other fun stuff. I live in District Three.
Mm-hmm.
I need roads paved, and I know Dave Marquez does what he do- what he can, with what he has, and he's, you know, him and Gaiba are literally the minority on, on the council, so they don't get shit done.
And by the way, Dave Marquez was an absentee yesterday, cause he's on vacation, so.
Yes, he took his family on vacation, you know what, I should've been right there with him. Um, so, you know, District One, and, and, and that's what I was saying, there's parts of this city that looks completely dilapidated.
Um, you know, look, you're in my studio right now, you're in the studio right now, you know. Be nice, I know your mama raised you better than that.
But what I'm saying is, you go to the, you go to Frederick, you go to the city, you know, go by City Hall, it's beautiful. They spend so much money on landscaping over there and they have the nice overhangs and the solar panels. You go across the street and it's like, what the hell?
And that's the U, that's where the slum lords are and all that other good stuff that I've been fighting for years.
But, and then Sunny Me Boulevard looks like hell, it, but there is no, if you wanna make Moreno Valley great, then you need to fix, work on the beautification of the city in its entirety.
But to do that, we need new leadership, and I'm gonna, uh, uh, switch to over here. I wanna talk about, uh, Kid Cabreras. When I first got into the diocese yesterday, I went to the, the hall, I see, uh, Mr. Cabreras, and you know, here's the funny thing, as much as I'm hated on and people are, oh, Donovan's such a jerk and he's such a dick and that nigger and whatever they say, right? They know they have to deal with me, right? And so, you know.
Say it's him effect.
Right, you know, and, you know, so I'm, I'm gonna be there, you know, I am, it is what it is, right? So I walk in, I, I, like I said, I don't have a problem with, uh, Ulysses, you know, uh, District Four, whatever it is. Now, here's the thing, and this is what we have to understand, uh, Gordon has said it, Lindsay has said it, a lot of people have said this. I saw Cabreras and I said, hey, what's going on? Hey, what's going on Donovan, you know, we're having a nice little conversation. Like I said, I have nothing against him personally, he's ethically challenged, as far as I'm concerned.
No, he is an amoral human being.
Right, ethically challenged, I mean, without a doubt.
If that's how you wanna nicely put it, cool.
Yeah, ethically challenged, so, uh, but that doesn't mean I don't, you know, treat him with respect and, you know, whatever it is.
Well, no, everyone deserves respect, I don't care how little I think you are.
Right, exactly.
You still deserve an ounce of respect.
So we, we shake hands, whatever, and I said, are you ready for that race? And he goes, yeah, you know, and to me, this is my opinion, he looked kinda like, yeah, you know, whatever. And here's the problem, and this is what I extirmized off of him saying that. When, in District Four coming up, it's gonna be Shaylinda Bernard.
My girl!
Versus Ulysses Cabreras. Two people, one-on-one, it does not matter how much money Highland Fairview gives this candidate. If we can get behind one candidate in all of these districts, we could win.
Absolutely.
And change around, but everybody has their own agenda.
Absolutely.
Now, I have no doubt that Shaylinda Bernard is going to win that district, and the reason why she's gonna win that district too is because the Highland Fairview people, he doesn't have enough people in that district or he can buy somebody off to do it.
Well, that's the thing, he hasn't been visible in that, when we were doing the whole bridge thing, you know, we both went to majority of the meetings.
Yeah.
I never saw him, but he still used that golf course as his campaign kickoff.
Right.
And I said, that's kind of a, that's kind of a slap in the face. You didn't have the time to go to any of the meetings, but you had other stuff to do for, you know, with Baca and Gutierrez, but you couldn't, this is your district.
Right, but what I'm saying is, the playbook of Highland Fairview is, they would get other people to run to split that vote.
Right, and they're not doing it this time, because they think Cabrera can do it on his own.
No, 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 that, that ain't what it is. There's not enough people that Highland Fairview could find that is willing to run and put their reputation on the line and be scrutinized like that in that district.
Sell their soul?
Nobody's willing to sell their soul, and that's one of their problems, and because that's the only way they win.
And the problem is Shaylinda is a strong ass.
Candidate.
Female.
Yes, strong female.
She is smart, she, I just, I, cause we were talking about when she first ran last time.
Mm-hmm.
And I was like, she, we went from, well, I don't know.
Well, and you're always gonna do that, because like when I came on the same, same thing, people are like, well, we don't know.
But in that one, uh, candidate's forum over at the golf course.
That I sponsored.
And we were both like, damn!
She came on strong.
She came out like gangbusters.
Knowledgeable gangbusters.
I was like, damn!
And, and so, so I have no doubt, that's gonna be a big problem for him.
That's gonna be his issue.
Now, District Two, the problem is, and like I said, I, I love Carla Thornton, but here's my thing, and I'm gonna tell Carla, yeah, cause I know she's gonna listen to this broadcast, and anybody else in District Two, please do not sleep on Cory Jackson.
Okay, so when you kept telling me that, because I'm like, nope, Carla's my girl, Carla's my girl. I don't know Carla from Adam, but from what I'm reading, I'm dig- you know, cause she's Calves.
Yeah, she's, she's, she's all that, she is, she is.
I'm like, and then I started digging into Cory Jackson, he's been laying the foundation, low key, for quite some time.
He knows how to run a campaign, he's the people, remember, he, he lost.
Learned from Gaiba, that's seven votes that really made a difference for him.
Seven vote made a difference.
And he has the pedants behind him, so public policy.
And they know how to run a campaign, and what I mean by that is, he has his wa- walking list.
Yes.
He has name recognition.
Right.
Um, he will show up at, at certain forums and, you know, he, he'll show up at that point.
Well, he's been, I think he's been working the church circuit for, you know, so, you know, he's been getting, you know, he's been doing that, you know.
Absolutely.
So he's been laying a low-key foundation.
People are familiar with him, right.
And Carla has been pounding the pavement and all that other fun stuff.
But the thing is, because she's new, like me right now. When Ladonna, um, came out that she was a bank robber, and we went to her and we said, look, you're not gonna win, step down.
Can we stop calling her a bank robber?
You gotta call what it is, it is what it is.
Can we just stop? You know, she, I think she retired finally, good for her.
Well, good for her, good for her, but we haven't seen her.
Oh, and they just had their anniversary, her and her husband just celebrated.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Oh, look at that love, go ahead love.
But the point is though, and what I'm trying to get at is, everybody has their own agendas.
Right.
And we could've kept District One, regardless if you like me or hate me, you see, everybody sees my platform and what I stand for. If she would've dropped out of that race, it would've been a different situation, at least Baca wouldn't have it.
True, but I mean, we are where we are now.
Right, but that's our problem, we keep shooting ourselves in the foot.
We, yes, but that's why, like, when I looked at the District Two, you know, candidates list, and then I looked at the mayor's race, and I was like, this is literally gonna be a mess. Because we have so many people running on their own little individual agendas. No one is saying, okay, who's the best, the strongest candidate out of the group? And let's push that person forward.
Right.
No one's doing that, cause now we have Fleming back in the mix, um, Guy was in the mix.
Bard, Lawrence Bard.
That guy. Um, um, uh, McBe- Mary McBean.
Mary McBean.
Joanne Stefan is in District Two, cause she didn't like any of the candidates, that's what she said she was running for.
That's what she says, yeah, yeah.
Again, Highland Fairview candidate, so I automatically just line that out. Um, Mary McBean, I don't.
Uh, the reason why she's running is because Victoria Baca talked her into it.
That's her homie.
And that's her homie, and she thinks Victoria Baca does a great job, Mary, Mary McBean, if you guys have known Dr. McBean, uh.
Oh, she's a PhD candidate, she's PhD?
Yeah, she's PhD.
Oh.
Um.
And she's that dumb?
Uh, she's, she's kinda off.
Book smart don't mean common sense.
Yeah, no, 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 what I'm saying is she's kinda off, in my opinion.
I don't think I've ever met the lady, but I don't.
Yeah, if you meet her, she's kinda off. And she used to be ahead of the, uh, uh, the now, the Black African Women's Movement or something, and they gave, and she gave an award to Victoria Baca, who everybody knows don't like, no, no Black people. Everybody knows that.
I wish y'all could see my face right now.
Yes, you should see her face, but, uh, she gave an award to her, and then, you know, it's just messy. If you meet her, you would be like, okay.
But see, that's why I haven't really been involved in any of the Black, uh, part of the Black delegation of Moreno Valley. It's.
It's a joke. We're, we're the only, we're the only group of people that will give an award to everybody that doesn't look like us. Hispanic Chamber of Commerce just gave Idiot Gutierrez an award for leadership for steal- stealing Darryl Terrill's idea for the higher mobile.
And that bothers me, and I wish somebody from the Hispanic Chamber would explain this to me. How can you give somebody that takes credit for someone else's idea? Because it's, it's noted that Darryl Terrill championed and he created.
Wrote the whole program.
Championed that whole higher mobile.
He sure did.
Gutierrez literally took the idea and said, mine, and guess what? He gets all the accolades for it, when in, in reality, the kudos belongs to Darryl Terrill.